Members of the zoning board, Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals and ladies and gentlemen, logging on as attendees, members of the public, allow me to say welcome and good evening. It's seven o'clock, our appointed hour for the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the hearing of January 25th. The published start time is 7:00 PM. So what we like to do is take a moment, let folks log on and allow people to populate the attendee roster. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals and I'll take a moment and introduce the board members that are here this evening, as well as members of the planning department and our tireless and fearless keeper of the minutes. And we will get into our agenda. Basically, if you haven't attended a Newburyport or any zoning board or public hearing via Zoom, allow me to lay out a quick landscape, it's a bit of a quick roadmap so that you know what to expect, so to speak. So what we'll do is I'll begin by calling the role, establishing that we have a quorum, which means we have a legal basis to conduct the city's business this evening before us. And once we establish that we have a quorum, I'll then take role and we will get right into our public hearings. We have no business hearing matters to deal with first, business, you know, business matters of the board first. So we'll get right into our published hearings. Before I do that, I'd like to take a moment and just walk for mostly the benefit of those that are unfamiliar. If you are logging on and you plan to speak or wish to speak in connection with an application or you just haven't done one of these, I lay out sort of the format and how we flow. So without further ado, I'm going to take the role and I'll ask the members of the ZBA to please respond if you are present by saying either here or present. And we'll start with Mr. Mark Moore.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Ken Swanton.
Present.
Mr. Walter Shannon.
Here.
And I note that associate member Gregory Bennet is absent this evening. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm also here. So that means we have one, two, three, four, five members. That is a quorum. And also for the legal record with respect to all the applications going forward, the five voting members, of course, will be the only five members in attendance. And so without further ado, I'll go right into sort of the lay of the land. I'd like to take a moment and just introduce other members of the panel that you'll see on the meeting this evening. Mr. Andy Port, our planning director. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. And also in attendance, we have Gretchen Joy, our keeper of the minutes. Mr. Mark Moore is our board vice chair. Mr. Stephen Delisle is our secretary. Mr. Ken Swanton, ZBA member, and Mr. Walter Bud Shannon, ZBA member. So without having done that, let me just give you the quick lay of the land for how these things flow. I'll begin by reading the legal notice. That's the published notice and it's an abridged version of what applications before us. To begin with, we always follow the agenda sequence unless there's some accommodation we've made. Otherwise, we would let everyone know if that was the case, but we'll follow that agenda. I'll begin by reading the legal notice by name of applicant, by the address, and then the docket number and a brief descriptor of what relief is being sought so that if you're listening, you know what it is the applicant's seeking relief from the zoning board of appeals, whether it's a special permit or a variance or a blend of both or a special permit for nonconformities. I'll let everyone know by just stating as much and then I always attach a brief descriptor that's from the legal notice as to what it is exactly the applicant seeks, all necessary permits to build X or to change Y, so that you understand, you know, everyone can understand more, you know, more or less the context of what's being asked. After I read the legal notice, I turn the floor over to the applicant or the applicant's representative to present the application. That's when either the applicant themselves or their attorney or architect or engineer or a blend of all of the above will present to the board the application. After the completion of that, we close that portion of the public hearing. I then go to the public comment section. That's when we will put up a slide that just describes the kind of rules of engagement when it comes to public comment. We invite everyone who wishes to speak to simply raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen, click on raise hand. I'll see that your hand's raised and then I'll recognize you by name or if you're a call-in attendee, I'll recognize you by the last four digits of your telephone number, at which point you'll have the floor. We ask that you give your name and address for the record so that Ms. Gretchen Joy can record your thoughts. Don't feel as though you need to come down in a pro or con column. You needn't pick a side, just simply let us know what you're thinking. Know though that from a format standpoint, if you pose a question, and we invite you to do so, know that we're not being discourteous when we don't respond directly to answer that question. From a format and flow standpoint, your public comment includes a question. Know full well that the members of the ZBA, all of us will be listening attentively and we will likely adapt and almost recount part or parts of your question. So you'll find that in the next section of the hearing, when it's open to questions from the board, that you'll hear your question in one form or another. So know well that we hear you, that we're taking notes and you may hear your question addressed in that format. Andy, what's the code on for those that are calling in by phone if they want to open their mic? Because on Zoom, it's one way and if you're calling in by telephone, what's the method to do that?
Yeah, generally folks are going to want to press star six to raise their hand and then star nine to unboot. And we can also identify those folks by their last digit, a couple of digits, just to let them know.
Okay, great. So and don't worry if you didn't write that down, but it appears that star six will raise your hand and then we'll identify you and we'll walk you through anything else you need to know. So once we have questions from the board, oh, and by the way, in the interest of balance and in the interest of efficiency, but also to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak and be heard, we ask that everyone who wishes to speak, please try to govern your comments to within two minutes. I do have and will almost always exercise discretion to sort of ebb and flow with that. But we do ask the courtesy that you kindly govern yourselves accordingly. Try to keep your comments within that respectful timeline, you know, be thorough, but just know that there are other folks that we're duty bound to hear from and would like to hear from. So with that, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. We then go to questions from the board. That's when members of the ZBA in sequence, and I'll call upon each member of the ZBA to pose any questions they may have. This is when they'll ask questions of the applicant or the applicant's representatives. This is also when members of the public, if you voiced your comments, you may well hear your thoughts and any questions you may pose or any follow-up matters voiced by members of the ZBA. So know well, that's the sort of integration of your portion of that process and your involvement as public comment. We then close that portion of questions. Once we complete questions from the board, we go to deliberations after that. Deliberations is when the public and all of us just listen to the board deliberate the legal criteria and the application on its merits out loud. So it's a full disclosure, fully out loud discussion among the board members on whether or not the applicant has met the legal criteria imposing their application, whether the board feels as though it's a complete application. It's met, you know, the criteria that we have to run, the lens through which we have to run each application, variance, special permit, special permit for nonconformities. We talk that out loud. Once we've completed deliberations, we then close that portion of public hearing and go to the final portion, which is the voting section. And under a modified Roberts Rules of Order, I will then invite a motion to approve from a member of the ZBA. Know well though that in doing so, that doesn't mean that neither I nor the member of the ZBA who poses that motion to approve plans to support the application, but merely rather it's just a mechanism by which it is brought to the floor for a vote. So it's always brought in the affirmative. So it's always a motion to approve. That motion is then seconded and then I call the role. In order for an application to be successful, four ZBA members must vote in the affirmative. So in this case, this evening, that means four out of the five members here must vote yes in order for the application to pass and for the motion to carry the application to pass. So with that, we've kind of walked through the administrative land. We will jump right into our first two applications, one at a time, of course, because the first two in our sequence, I believe we have a request for continuances. We'll take care of those first so that anyone who may be here, planning to speak in connection with those applications, we hopefully are trying to pay the courtesy of making sure that folks aren't just waiting around only to find out that an application's not going to go forward. So with that, I believe we have a request from the applicant's attorney on the matter for Four Plum Street. It was continued from December 14th to this evening. It's a modification of a pre-existing nonconforming structure. And attorney me, may we proceed on a vote on the request to continue? And I think, did you have a date as well? Was it February 8th?
Yes, thank you. That would be fine, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. So members of the ZBA, on the applicant's attorney's request, the matter of Four Plum Street, they ask that the matter be continued to the hearing date of February 8th. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Okay, motion is made by, was that?
Mr. Moore.
Oh, motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role and the motion to continue Four Plum Street to February 8th. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle? Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five of the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries and that application will be coming back on the hearing of February 8th. Thank you. The next matter is the matter of Brad Kutcher, 344 Merrimack Street. The applicant's representative is Nick Cracknell from Keystone. This matter was continued to this evening from the hearing of December 28th. It's a two-prong application, a variance on lot area and rear yard setback, as well as a special permit for nonconformities, expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming structure. I understand late, though it was this late afternoon, that Mr. Cracknell, you two are requesting further time to refine your application and you're requesting a continuance?
That's correct.
And would you like us to, now, as I think you're aware, the board has undertaken and by next meeting, we will most likely formalize an endeavor to limit our docket number of hearings per evening to no more than five applications. In the spirit of applications becoming more granular and detailed and thorough, the board wishes to respond in kind by being more granular, detailed and thorough. And it's a challenge to do that beyond five applications. So as we just continued Four Plum Street to that evening, we're now at five. We, I will put it to the board because I suspect that you'd like to be heard on possibly coming on on the 8th, or would you be amenable to be continued to the 28th of February?
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible for us to be put on the 8th and we're willing to wait? And if nobody else drops out of that meeting or the meeting goes long, we understand we would get continued to the later meeting of the month, if that's possible?
I will put that, it's kind of a special request and I want to be balanced and fair, but I will put it to my colleagues and we'll see where the wind's blowing. All right, so I guess members of the ZBA, you know, the applicant wishes us to undertake the motion to continue, would like to be on the 8th, will concede the 28th. Mr. Moore, we'll start with you. Any thoughts on that or how does the board wish to proceed?
I didn't, I don't have it in front of me either, but we can do this now. I believe one of the five that's already on the docket would be a continuance for State Street of a variance request, which to me would maybe provide a little room to add this in on the 8th. I don't anticipate that being more than a few seconds to do, but that's where I stand. If that's the case, then I think we could do it on the 8th.
Okay.
I just, I don't want to leave it to, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can, I'd rather just decide to do it or not and I'm good either way. But I was just asking if one of the five was that, my words, placeholder for the appeal for that variance there, if that's the case, that shouldn't take too long, so.
Okay. Mr. Delisle, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm okay either way. I think that Mr. Moore presents a good procedure there that, you know, provided the State Street application is one of our applications on that evening, that then we would have time for the continuance of this application to February 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, do you have any thoughts to the contrary?
I'd like to make a comment, Ken Swanton, which is, I mean, last time around, this was a very long presentation, so I don't think we should start this topic any later than 10:30 is my only caveat. So if we have a cancellation and we get through stuff, great, but I don't think we should start this one late.
All right. That seems fair. Mr. Shannon, you have any thoughts beyond that?
No, no, I'm okay with moving it to the 8th. I think also we run a pretty high percentage of people that drop out at the last minute. So I think with State Street being on there and the chance of someone else dropping out.
All right. Sounds okay. So Mr. Cracknell, it sounds like as long as we can get your flight off the gate by 10:30, we won't have to bump you to the next day.
That's fantastic. We appreciate that. Very fair.
All right, well, thank you for flying. So we'll put you, we will put you on to, we'll undertake the motion to put you on for the 8th with that caveat and thank you for indulging us the time to sort of feel this out. Do we have a motion to continue the application on 344 Merrimack Street to February 8th?
All moved, Ken Swanton.
I'll second that, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Delisle. Motion's made and seconded, calling the role, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. It's five of the affirmative. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Matters continue to February 8th. Thank you all. And thank you, thank you, Nick, for your patience as well. And members of the public that may be here, intended to speak in connection with that. If you didn't catch this, the board has just continued that matter, pardon me, for the hearing on February 8th. This is not uncommon on a complicated application that is undergoing more refinement and such. So if you were here to speak on that, just please know that we will be taking it up on the 8th and we will look forward to hearing from you then and we'll certainly hear from everyone then. Okay. Moving on then, we'll go to our first application that's going to presumably go forward. This is the, I'll read the legal notice. This is the application of Sarah and Michael Dinsmore, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. The application is 34 Ashland Street and it's a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits to renovate and extend an existing single family home. And may we hear from the applicant attorney me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa, 30 Green Street, a new report on behalf of Sarah and Michael Dinsmore, who are virtually here with me this evening. The architects on the project or design group on the project is MPG Design, Phineas and Mindy Gay, and they're not able to be here this evening. So you get to work with me on the architectural discussion. So if you go to the first slide, please, the property is at 34 Ashland Street. It's at the corner of Ashland and Coolidge Street. Michael and Sarah proposed to construct a one-story addition on the side of their home along with the dormer and undertake some renovations. The applicant is requesting a special permit, as the chair indicated, for nonconformities under Section 9. The property is located in the R2 zoning district under the ordinance and was constructed on or around 1927. In 1998, there was an addition added to the north side off of Coolidge Street, which is where the proposed new addition is going. So that's going to be the renovation is on that existing little bump out that I'm going to show you in a minute. The property is a corner lot and has existing nonconformities for primary front yard of five feet where 25 feet is required. That's the Coolidge Street side. Secondary front yard, which is the Ashland Street side of 15 feet where 25 feet is required. The rear yard setback of four feet where 25 feet is required and lot area of 4,140 where 10,000 is required and lock coverage of 29% where 25% is required. If you go to the next slide, please. So on this site plan, as you can see on Coolidge Street, you'll see the deck and then you'll see that little bump out. That little bump out was added in 1998 and that's where the addition is going to go. So this is a, this is a good overview of that. So you see the primary front yard at Coolidge Street, secondary front yard at Ashland Street, and the house sits nicely there on the corner. Next slide, please. So here we have the existing conditions. This view is not going to change at all. This is the view from Ashland Street. Next slide, please. And this is the view from Coolidge Street. The addition in a moment, you're going to see will be put on the right-hand side of the structure where that current little bump out is and where the deck is. Also from this view, in a minute, we'll show you the dormer, which is a dormer that meets the city's guidelines, is on the right-hand side of this roof view. Next slide, please. And here is the existing rear elevation, which would be opposite Coolidge Street. Next slide, please. And then this would be the left side elevation as you face it from Ashland Street. And next slide. And just to give you some context with real photographs there, we have the view from Ashland Street. And again, this view isn't going to change at all. Next slide, please. And we have the view from Coolidge Street. And again, you can see the little bump out that was added, the deck and the side of the roof that will have the dormer added to it. Next slide, please. And here's a view looking back at the house where that addition will be added and the dormer will be installed. Next slide, please. So as I said, the applicant is proposing to add a one-story, 123 square foot addition off the existing bump out on the north side off of Coolidge Street. And then it fills in an existing gap. I'm going to show you that in a minute too, thereby intensifying and extending the primary front yard setback to the five feet. A dormer will also be added along the same roof line on the interior side of this elevation. And the proposed dormer meets the guidelines and exemption under the city's demolition ordinance. The lock coverage will also be intensified slightly to, from 29% to 32%. And the DCOD was not triggered in this application. Next slide, please. So in this, in this view, you can see the proposed addition and that's on the right-hand side of the structure. You can see it kind of comes around that addition and that little tail off the new addition is where it gets filled in so that that front elevation off of Coolidge Street has a continuous line along the street there. Next slide, please. And just to give you an idea here, the My Maps, to My Maps view, this is the one, the plan view. And then the next slide, please, is the GIS view. So you can generally see the neighborhood that this structure exists. And next slide, please. So here we have again, the view from Ashland Street. These are the proposed conditions. Nothing is happening on this view, on this elevation. Next slide, please. And here's where the addition is going. So we have the addition off the back or it's actually the front side yard, sorry, because it's on Coolidge Street. So you can see the additions I explained earlier and you can see the dormer at the top, which again meets the guidelines under the ordinance. You can see it's finished with similar shingles, as is the rest of the house and architectural shingles on the roof. Then you can see the little wooden step that goes down off the side to egress out of the proposed addition. Next slide, please. And this is from the right-hand view, which is the side, but would be the rear off of Ashland Street. So this is the side off of Coolidge Street. And again, you can see the proposed addition with the dormer on the top. And as you can see, it's just a slight 123 square foot addition off the back of the house. Next slide, please. And this is the opposite view. So this is the view if you're coming down Ashland Street towards Merrimack Street and you can see the addition on the rear and then the dormer on the second, third floor. Next slide, please. So in accordance with Section 92 of the ordinance, of course, we can't create any new nonconformities and no new nonconformities will be created. As I noted, that front yard setback on Coolidge Street is exacerbated along that front line to the five-foot mark of the original structure. The applicant also can show that the proposed modification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Again, the addition is modest 123 square feet. It comes off the existing addition off the north side of the structure. And while the addition intensifies both the primary front yard and a lock coverage, again, it's a small increase. Both the adjacent structure on Coolidge Street and the structure across the street on Coolidge Street are setback from their property lines and the addition will have minimal impact on each of them. A view of the neighboring structures, as I showed earlier, reveal that many of the structures have similarly added small additions on their homes. Here, we're seeking, the applicant seeking to make minimal impacts, but by receiving significant advantage within the interior of their home. I've also provided two letters of support from the properties on either side of, on Ashland Street, both across on Coolidge and then directly beside on Ashland Street at 32 and 36. So the applicant requests the board's consideration that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure and would request your approval of the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. Closing that portion of the public hearing, we're going to now go to public comment and I'll ask Andy Port, our city's planning director, to kindly put up the slide. These are the instructions that I had mentioned on public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak, just kindly click, raise hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We'll recognize you and open the floor to you. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against or just in connection with, going once, going twice, I see still no hands. I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go right into questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Attorney Mead, I just have one question I believe I know the answer to, but I'm not an attorney. I just wondered if you could just explain for the record why the front yard setback shrinks even though you're not creating a new nonconformity?
It doesn't actually shrink. If we can go to the site plan, please. So it's, well, it shrinks because the sideline is, can you blow that up by any chance, Caitlin? So I can, so you'll see the five feet at the corner of the existing structure.
Right.
And then again, that five foot gets carried along the same property line, which actually isn't an angle in.
Just cut to the way the house is situated and.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. But I don't have any other questions.
Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one question and I may have missed this in the presentation, but I was wondering what the current square footage of the house is.
So I'm going to look at the current square footage of the house according to the assessor's records, Mr. Delisle, in living area. All right, I'm going to use the living areas. Well, I'll give you both, just so, the assessor's records say the living area is 1,748 and the gross area is 3,480.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I had a question. Kind of in the vicinity of Mr. Moore's question, but you know, I took a walk around the neighborhood today and the property line is kind of back off the sidewalk. The house is up a hill. It's kind of a side street. So I wound up not really having a question. So I'm fine. No questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shannon.
Yeah, just one quick question, using the drawing that's up now that we're looking at, how big is the old deck? Is it similar to the footprint of the proposed addition or is it slightly smaller? Or do you know?
I don't, I don't know, but we could go back to the existing conditions plan, Caitlin.
Looks like the addition is eight feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so that looks actually bigger.
Yeah, well, and then you add the steps off. So I think the deck might be a little bigger, Mr..
Okay. I was just trying to get scale when I was looking at it. I was looking at the deck and I was wondering in my mind's eye if the addition was bigger. It looks like it's probably smaller.
Yeah, the owner just texted me and the deck is larger than the addition.
Great. All right, thank you. No other questions, Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shannon. I don't have any further questions, you know, other than the one or two that were already raised and addressed, so I have no other questions. With that, I'll close the questions portion of the public hearing and we'll go into deliberations. And just to remind the board, we are deliberating on a special permit for nonconformities. So I'll ask the board members to kindly, you know, govern the deliberations around the legal criteria for a special permit. And with that, we'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. But we have a pretty straightforward application here with a dormer being added that meets all the setback requirements, a modest bump out that's going over the partial footprint of the deck. And while the addition will intensify a few of the nonconformities, it's obviously or clearly not creating any new nonconformities, but intensifying a couple. But I think it's. But I think it's an appropriate bump out for the house and the neighborhood. Not egregious in any way, shape or form. So I don't see, it's not creating new nonconformity. And with the size and scale and mass of this bump out addition, I don't see it being substantially more detrimental than to the neighborhood. So I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Moore. No new nonconformity here. And the modest, the modest sizes of the addition or the proposed addition is something that certainly I don't think, in my opinion, is going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I can support this also.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Yes, I too can support this. I was a little concerned because I haven't generally supported things where they're five feet off the street and all of a sudden get to be three feet off the street. But how they walked around the street, it's a little misleading because the property lines back up off the street and back up off of the of the sidewalk. And it's a, it's a pretty quiet little side street there on Coolidge. And then, as my colleagues have said, it's a modest addition. So I can support this.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Shannon?
Concur with the previous comments, and I can support the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. And I'll just note for the record, if if nothing else, that the legal criteria for special permit for nonconformities is outlined in our zoning ordinance, section 9B2, to two-prong test. And I agree with my colleagues in that it appears the advocates met, in my opinion, and it sounds like my colleagues, both prongs, that there are no new spec, that no new nonconformities being created and that the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming user structure. In fact, it's, it's not detrimental, in my opinion, at all, much less substantially more detrimental. Seems like the, my colleagues agree. So that's my my only add on. Seeing nothing else in deliberations, I think we can close deliberations and go to a vote. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve application at 34 Ashland Street for special permit for nonconformities, ZNC 21-13.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have a second?
A second, Bud Shagnan.
All right, Mr. Shagnan is seconded. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Shagnan, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Rob Chantel, I vote yes. Five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the special permit for nonconformities on 34 Ashland Street is approved. Thank you, members of the ZBA. Thank you, Attorney Mead, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Moving to the second hearing on our agenda this evening. This is the application of Jonathan and Lindsay Green, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. The application addresses 33 Lafayette Street and the applicant seeks all necessary permits for a special permit for nonconformities to add an upward extension of a secondary front yard setback nonconformity. With that, may we hear from the applicant. Attorney Mead, you have the floor again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa, 30 Green Street. With me this evening is Jonathan and Lindsay Green, who are the owners of the property, and Scott Brown, who is the architect for the project. The property, as noted, is at 33 Lafayette Street. And Jonathan and Lindsay are proposing to renovate their home, including an upward extension of a small bump out that's adjacent to Highland Avenue. This property sits at the corner of Lafayette and Highland Avenue. So there's no change to the proposed footprint. If you could go to the first slide, please. So the property is located in the R2 zoning district. I might add, just for the beginning, this property is considered historic under the ordinance, and we have already been to the Historic Commission, who has, who has released the demolition delay. So the property is in the R2 zoning district. It was constructed around 1920. As I said, it's at the corner of Lafayette Street and Highland Avenue. It has existing nonconformities for primary front yard at 13.8, where 25 is required, secondary front yard at 14.7, where 25 is required, and a lot coverage of 26.2, where 25 is the maximum allowed. Next slide, please. So the proposed project Scott is going to show you is to construct the secondary story addition over the existing bump out on Highland Avenue. No changes are proposed to the footprint. And the proposed addition constitutes an upward extension of the existing secondary yard front setback on Highland Avenue. If you go to the next slide, please. So as you can see, here is John and Lindsay's home. Sits at the corner of Highland and Lafayette. At the top of the plan, adjacent to Highland Avenue is the bump out that I was speaking of. And that is where the addition is going to go. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk about the proposed addition.
Well, thank, thank you, Lisa. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. Caitlin, if we could just go to slide six, please. Great, thank you. So these are the proposed elevations for the project. At the bottom of the page is the front elevation as the house is viewed from Lafayette Street. On the right hand side is where our proposed addition is. At the top of the page, this is the right side elevation as you would view this from Highland Ave. So this is a modest four bedroom house. It has one full bathroom for a family with three children. This project is about providing an additional second floor bathroom, a closet for the primary bedroom, as well as a first floor powder room. It is a small house and we can't accomplish those goals within the existing footprint. And the only place where it makes sense to expand is over the existing bump out on the right side of the house. Our design direction for this is largely driven by what is behind those exterior walls and the need for privacy. This has resulted in a smaller window type that is different from the rest of the house. We've also decided, decided to change up the siding type as well, going with a horizontal shiplap. And also some of the details, recognizing that this new work is just going to be different from the rest of the house. We are tying this addition into the existing house at the eve level, matching and wrapping the existing eve lined around the addition. And also note that we've done our best to keep the height of this down. And I think that is very important because this property in addition is on a corner. Next slide, please. So this is the rear elevation, proposed rear elevation of the house. Not highly visible, not a lot going on here. Next slide, please. Existing photo, this is taken from the front left corner of the house on Lafayette. Over the right side, that is where we are proposing to to do all of our work. Next slide, please. Again, this is from the opposite corner, closer to the corner of Lafayette and Highland. Next slide. And finally, as you would see this from Highland Ave. So, you know, I think this is a small request. It is a modest addition to a small house. And I think what we're doing here is going to be very successful. And with that, I will turn it back over to counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And if you could just go down to the next slide to give the board some context. So and maybe blow that up a little bit. So you can see this is right across from the hospital. And you can see the other homes in the neighborhood that have, you know, pretty significant intensification on their lots, as I noted earlier. The footprint of this particular project is not changing at all. So with that, if you could go to the next slide, please. The applicant needs to show under section nine that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity. And here, as I stated, there is no new nonconformity, merely the intensification of the upward extension of that secondary front yard setback. The next finding, of course, is that the proposed addition will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. Here, while there will be an upward extension, it will be constructed over the existing first floor bump out. The bump out with the second floor addition will remain smaller and subservient to the existing two-story home, while also complementing the existing architectural style of the home. The existing structure is 23 feet tall. The bump out addition is proposed to be 20 feet, five inches. No change to the footprint of the structure and therefore no change to the open space or lot coverage. There will be no outward intensification of the nonconformity either. And but for the property being a corner lot, the secondary front yard setback would be in conformance with the side yard setback at 14.7, where 10 is required. However, of course, as the change in the ordinance included the 25 yard setback on both the primary and secondary yard setback, front yard setbacks. So here, we believe that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the existing structure or the structures in the neighborhood. And we would request the board approve the request put forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. We'll go, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions. Sorry, public comment. We can put the slide up again. Anyone who wishes to speak, just kindly raise your hand and we will recognize you for the record. Going once, going twice, I still see no hands raised. So I'm going to close the public comment section of the public hearing. And we'll go right to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chantel. I found the presentation to be very straightforward, clear, covered all the points. I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Mead, the the setback where the addition would be located, the Highland Avenue side, that's the 14.7 feet where 25 is required, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Going to Mr. Swanton.
No questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chad.
No questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. I too have no questions, so we can close the questions from the board section of the hearing and go to deliberations. And again, we're deliberating under the criteria of 9B2, 9B3. And on special permit for, I'm sorry, 9B2, special permit for nonconformities. And with that, we will start with Mr. Moore in deliberations.
Give Mr. Chantel. Again, it was a very straightforward, thorough presentation. There are new, no new nonconformities. There's no change to the footprint. It's a thoughtful, modest addition. So with no change to the building footprint, no new nonconformities introduced by the application and a modest basically topping off of a bump out that already exists. I don't see anything in the size, scale and massing of this of this application, this proposal that could result in any kind of judgment of substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood for those two reasons or multiple reasons, I can support this.
All right, thanks, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will concur with Mr. Moore on this. I I see that there's no new nonconformity. And I also, my opinion that the the preexisting structure or use is, you know, not really going to be that that highly modified here. We're going up a story and it's sufficiently far removed from both streets. So I I think that this seems like a good project and I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I agree. It's modest. It's without new nonconformities and it's, it's fine relative to its neighborhood. So I can support it.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman?
I agree with my colleagues and just like to say kudos to the design. I like the change in the siding setting off the the addition and also a very interesting roof line where it ends at the attic window, of the existing attic window. Very, very attractive, so I can support it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. I agree with all of those comments. I too can support it. It's a nice design. It's a modest request. I think it complies with the criteria. Closing that portion of the public hearing, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for 33 Lafayette Street, ZNC 21-14.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, and thank you for the second, Mr. Swanton, calling the roll on the motion to approve. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Rob Chantel, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries and the application is approved. Thank you, all members of the ZBA, and thank you, Attorney Mead, and good luck to your clients.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving now to the last public hearing on our agenda this evening. It is an application of Scott and Jean Clark, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC for the application address of 40 Winter Street. This application is a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permits or special permits, variances and the related for a renovation in addition to the rear of a single family structure. And again, this application is a special permit for nonconformities. May we hear from the applicant and Attorney Mead. This is your application as well. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa, 30 Green Street in new report. And with me this evening is Scott and Jean Clark, and this is their home. And their architect is Larry Reeves. Scott and Jean, you can go to the first slide, please. Scott and Jean proposed to renovate and construct an addition on the rear of their home. The property is located in the R2 zoning district as well as the demolition control overlay district under the ordinance and was constructed in or around 1920. What's really interesting about this application, and actually, it's it's kind of interesting in the context of all the applications for the evening. It's been fun to kind of see different style homes in different areas of the city. In this particular application, while it's not necessarily germane so much to the board, it was to the Historic Commission. This house wasn't actually constructed on this lot at 40 Winter Street. The house is constructed across the street on Winter Street, down in the area of where Pleasant Street originally ran across Winter Street prior to the construction of the Route One of the Route One corridor and was moved to be located on this lot, which is one lot behind the High Street corner of Winter Street and High Street. So I just think it's an interesting, interesting story with this house. And the house itself is is quite nice, as you're going to see shortly. But Scott and Jean appreciate that history and are doing, making great strides at taking care of and restoring certain portions of the house and some of the really kind of interesting and unique windows in particular that they have stored in their basement. So there is no Form B for the pro, for the project, but it is listed on the district data sheets. And while we don't trigger the DCOD, we did have to go to the Historic Commission for a roof line change. The Historic Commission has approved these plans and released the demolition delay. So the property is currently nonconforming for lot area of 10,000 square feet, where 6,500, where 10,000 are required. And the property has 6,504. The frontage is at 57.5, where 90 feet is required. And the lot front yard setback requires 25. And this is a typo, I have to say, I'm going to correct on the slide. The actual front yard setback is at 19.7, not 10.9. So this slide is incorrect, but all of your filings are correct. So the, those are the nonconformities, lot area, frontage, front yard setback. Both side yards, rear setback, building height, lot coverage and open space are all conforming, and they will continue to be conforming after the addition is built, if you approve it. And none of the existing nonconformities are actually intensified or changed. We're here because the lot has insufficient area and frontage and the addition is more than 500 square feet. Next slide, please. So what is, what Jean and Scott are proposing to do is to construct an addition on the rear of the home. The addition overlays a portion of the existing roof, which is why we were in front of the Historic Commission. It doesn't alter or extend any of the existing nonconformities, as I said a minute ago. And the capacity for off-street parking actually is increased because the driveway shifts on the opposite side of the house in order to allow room for the addition in the back. The addition does add more than 500 square feet, as I said to you earlier. It actually adds a 767 square feet, including the newly usable space in the attic. And as I noted, the Historic Commission did release the demolition delay. Next slide, please. So if you could blow this up a little bit, please, Caitlin. So here is the addition, which is highlighted in yellow on the site plan. You'll notice that under the yellow, and this is going to become more evident when we show you the elevations, but the existing structure, there's a portion of the existing structure that's being removed, which is underneath. You can kind of see it underneath the, the yellow or orange color, but we wanted to show you so you could see the actual location of the addition, so there wasn't any confusion about where it was located, and it does overlay the part of the removed, part of the removed structure and the roof that's going to be overlaid. And again, none of the existing non-conformities are exacerbated, and it doesn't create any new non-conformities. Next slide, please. So here are the elevations, and Larry actually did a great job at being able to have us help walk through this. You can see the proposed conditions are on the top, and the existing conditions of the same elevations are right under, so you can just look and see the changes. So as you can see in the upper left-hand side, we have that red line going down. That is the existing structure, and you can see it lines up with the structure underneath. So you can see where the addition is actually being added on the rear, and it carries along the same design of the roof line. It carries along the eve line and ties in nicely with the existing design and architectural style of the structure. And so if you look at the elevation, for the front elevation, which is on the right-hand side of this drawing, again, the front elevation doesn't change at all. And you can see in the back where the new addition will go, which is lower in roof height than the existing main part of the structure, which is more towards Winter Street. Next slide, please. Actually, if you could, actually, I just want to point one other thing out on that. Thank you. Go back. The other thing that you'll note, and it doesn't really have a big issue with the zoning board, but I wanted to note that there's a new roof that's going to be over that side door in the left-hand elevation with new brackets, which we'll be able to see it a little bit more. You can see it on the front elevation off to the left-hand side. So just, there's a roof there now, but it's going to be removed and reconstructed. Next slide, please. So here's the right side elevation. So as you're standing at the front of the house, it's the right side elevation. And again, you can see where the new addition is versus where the existing structure is. And we just thought that that was important to be able to see how that all lines up. So that is the, the new addition on the top right, left-hand side, which is the right side elevation. And again, the rear elevation on the opposite side, on the right-hand side of the drawing, you can see in the lower what existing looks like, and the upper what the proposed looks like. Again, it's lower than the main part of the roof and steps in on that side as well. So if you could go, while I'm on this, let me just say a couple of things about the details. There'll be, architectural shingles will be used on all the roofs. The two-over-one windows, we showed a match to try to carry along the windows that exist in the current house. You can see that the current house has a very unique three or four-over-one window. There are a number of those, which I'm going to show you photos of in a minute, that are going to be replaced and restored in the original house. And there's a very unique window that's on the elevation ahead of this. If you could go back to the prior elevation a minute. So on the right-hand, left-hand side, which is the left-side elevation, if you can see that window in the bot, first floor, that's, that's horizontal instead of vertical, that window is actually going to be, it's an original, and they have restored it and found it in the basement, and it's going to be reinserted. So if you could go to the next slide down. Also, the, the house is currently covered with aluminum siding or vinyl siding, excuse me. That's going to all be removed. And the, depending on the condition of the clavers underneath, they're either, either going to be repaired or new clavards with the same reveal will be used in, in their place. But that investigation hasn't fully taken place, except for to say that the siding that's currently covering the clavers will be all removed. Next slide, please. And this is just to show the, the context of the house. I would note that we have a letter of support from the property at 180 High Street, which is right next door on the left-hand side, which is the side that the addition is being constructed on. Next slide, please. And then we took some contextual, saw photographs for the board. So this is across the street from Summer Street. Next slide, please. And this is the view coming up Winter Street. Of course, Winter Street is one-way. It's the White House, not the Yellow House. Next slide, please. And this is from the corner of Winter and High, so you'll be able to see the addition, obviously, from this view. Next slide, please. Of course, people travel up Winter and not down Winter. This is the view from the rail trail, just on the Washington Street side. So you can see the roof line, you'll be able to see, but you actually won't be able to see the addition from the rail trail. Next slide, please. And this is the opposite. So obviously, when you're down on the rail trail beneath High Street, you can't see the house, so that would be going in the opposite direction. Next slide, please. So the boards, as we've said previously, the board standard here is under Section 9. The first is that there will be no new non-conformities. In this instance, not only there are not any new non-conformities, the applicant isn't intensifying any non-conformities or exacerbating any non-conformities. The addition fully meets all of the dimensional requirements, the ordinance. Next is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. And here, we, we believe that by constructing the addition to the rear and to the left side of the property in a way that is entirely conforming with the dimensional requirements, the Clarks have been mindful to be sure that the proposed addition minimizes its impacts on their surrounding neighborhood by not creating any new non-conformities or extending any existing non-conformities. Also, the design of the proposed addition doesn't radically alter the appearance of the structure. Rather, in fact, it is complementary to it, which was a comment made by the Historic Commission. The addition is similar in form and style to the existing structure as well, and that's on purpose because the way that the roof lines integrate into the existing roof. While it overlays the rear portion of the existing structure, the proposed addition doesn't interfere with the hip-style roof that's found on many structures of its similar style. And other than the left side of the structure, the addition will be minimally visible from the front right side or rear, given its location. The rear of the structure is not visible. The right side also doesn't have as much visibility to, to as close proximity to the other neighboring structure. And the right side of the addition is being stepped in from the existing structure also. Additionally, as I mentioned, there are a number of other benefits. Obviously, the exposure of the, either the existing siding underneath or new siding at the same reveal, the reinstallation of some of the more unique windows and the rehabilitation and restoration of the rest of the existing windows. And as I noted, the, the removal of the aluminum siding, as I indicated earlier, it is aluminum, not vinyl. Next slide, please. Again, just, I just wanted to show you. So here are some of the double-hung windows with decorative sashes that are being fully restored. Next slide, please. And here's that really interesting decorative window also, that will be reinstalled into the south elevation. And with that, the applicants will request that the board approve the request for a special permit for non-conformities, as we believe the applicant meets the requirements set forth in the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. Anyone wish to speak in connection with this application, just kindly raise your hand, bottom of your Zoom screen, and we will recognize you for any comment. Seeing no hands, going once, going twice. I will close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go right into questions from the board, beginning with Mr. Moore.
Good, Mr. Champetti. I'll just cut to the quick, very detailed presentation. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
I had two questions, Attorney Mead. The first, I think, is more substantive than the second. The first is, is there, was there a roof deck on the third story?
It's a balcony. So, yeah, so see that, see it's inset. Mr. Delisle, so you see the rear elevation?
Yeah.
Right.
I see it in the middle of the third floor there.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. What, how big is the addition square footage? I know that the, square footage-wise, excuse me. I know that the, the, the relief sought was greater than 500 square feet, as is required. But what is the actual size of the addition?
So they, the, I'm going to tell you what the, it's not a net, it's an actual number, right? So the current house is 2,017 square feet, right? So when you put the addition on, it's an additional 767 square feet. And I'm going to tell you how it's broken down. It's 308 square feet on the first floor, 314 square feet on the second floor, and then because of the reconfiguration of the attic and the kind of extension there, they're going to be able to use the attic at 143 square feet.
And in, as you get to those net figures for the first floor and presumably the, the second floor also, that i- in the presentation, you indicated that there was a portion of the, of the house that, that's going away, correct? So you, you're adding some and you're taking some away, and you get to that, the, the figure, the 2,017 plus the 767, correct?
That, yeah, that's, yeah, so the end is, the end number is 2,017 plus 767.
Got it. Okay. And then my last question relates to the, the windows that were, are being relocated. Those look really neat. Are they going in the original locations that, that they were in, historically speaking?
Yes, they're going into the original house. You'll see the addition has the two-over-ones, except for that back view, which has two over, one of those two-over-twos in the center of the first floor. So all of the original windows are going back into the original structure.
Right. I was wondering if those, if the, the horizontally oriented window and the, and the window above that were going back into the locations where they were historically in the house.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, neat. All right. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Delisle, was that the end of, was that the extent of your questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Mr. Swanton.
I guess. First, I'd like to say I appreciate these elevation drawings with the before on the bottom and the after on the top. It makes it simple to follow them. Thank you. This is a house that I actually looked at when I was looking at New Report. And it's got some pretty interior as well that hasn't come up here, and I know it's irrelevant. But I'm glad to see the owners are taking care of it and making these improvements and doing it mindfully. I was concerned about the massing and the sizing, but you know, and walking around this place, I, I, you know, I had to laugh. That picture from the rail trail is what it looks like. You're looking at a wall, basically. So it's, you know, I, I think it's tastefully done. I don't really have any questions, so I pass.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Mr. Champetti, can I just, I need to correct myself from a minute ago. I was just informed, actually, in relationship to Mr. Delisle's question, the horizontal window is actually going back into a new space, which is in the dining room, I guess. So if you go back up to the slide above, so you see that above, on the left-hand, the left-side elevation, do you see that horizontal window? That's where the new, the old horizontal window is going in to that location right there.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep, thank you. All right. I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. Chan.
No worries. Mr. Chan, you're up.
An excellent interruption. Thank you. I've got no further questions. Questions I had were asked, and a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. And I have nothing further to add as well, so we can close that portion of the public hearing and move into the, the deliberations. And again, in deliberations, I'll just ask that our members tailor your deliberations around 9B2, which is the criteria for special permit for non-conformities. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I, I think this is a really thoughtful addition to an interesting house with an interesting story. So all around, well done for the applicant. The hurdles that we have to look at with the special permit for non-conformities will be there's no new non-conformities. We've already established that with the presentation. And then while there is a substantial change at the property, this is not an insignificant addition. It, you know, it will not increase lot coverage past dimensional controls nor decrease open space anywhere near minimum required. Rear setback, again, is decreased, but well within, within the bounds. So, you know, anyway, you look at this, it's a, it's a meaningful addition, but all within controls. By a long shot, and there's a lot of thought given to, to what's going on. I can't see, because as was pointed out, I believe by Mr. Swanton, you really can't see it from the rail trail. So people that we most affected are butters that most effective, most affected are, there are two, and one of them has said, no problem with, has no problem with it, and they're going to be closest to it. So that's also, I think, worth noting. So with all that said, I, I don't see how this can be seen as substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood with respect to size, scale, massing, although it is significant. It's well within dimensional controls, and I can support it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Once again, I'm going to agree with Mr. Moore's analysis. I, when I first saw the drawings, I, I was concerned about the, the, the massing and the, and the size of the addition. But after going by the, the location, that sort of allayed my fears. And then, you know, getting the more details this evening certainly put those to rest. So I agree with Mr. Moore that there is no new non-conformity, and this proposed addition would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I can also support this project.
Very good. Mr. Swanton.
I too can find no new non-conformities, and I too believe it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so therefore I can support it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chan.
My colleagues, I'll restate, when I first looked at the drawings, I was concerned about massing. But as you do drive by, and the fact that they stepped back the, the addition on the right side, if you will, away from High Street, I think was smart. I, I think it's fairly well-hidden and very tastefully done. So as, as my colleagues have stated, I can support the application.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chan. And I, I concur, and I too can support it. And I think the applicants met all the necessary criteria. So I'll close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go to a vote. We have a, sorry, I will go to a, a motion. Do we have a motion from a member of the ZBA to approve the application?
As Mr. Chan, I'll make a motion to approve the application for 40 Winter Street, ZNC 21-15 renovations in addition to the rear of a single-family structure.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Chan and Mr. Swanton. On the second, motion's been made and seconded, calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chan.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, a vote yes. Five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much, members of the ZBA. Thank you, Attorney Mead, and good luck to Scott and Jeanine. I'm sorry, to Jean Clark, your clients.
Thank you very much, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Have a great evening. All right, members of the ZBA, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. So with that, we can close that portion of the, of our meeting and go right into our business meeting. Before us is the approval of our minutes from the meeting of January 11th. Do we have any comments, changes, revisions, or in the absence, do we have a motion to approve? Do we have any comments, changes, revisions, or in the absence, do we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes, Ken Swanton.
All right.
Seconded, Mark Moore.
Motion's made and seconded. Um, all those in favor, well, let me just call the roll. Motion to approve the minutes made and seconded, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, a vote yes. I'm going out of order to keep you guys awake. Five in the affirmative, the ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Other updates from the chair or planning director, um, I think, um, most of you may be aware that we had a sort of a joint Zoom call that included myself, Bonnie Sontag, the chairman, the chairperson of the planning, the, uh, the planning board, as well as, um, uh, Counselor McCauley, um, and, um, there were, Andy, who else was on, of course, Andy Port was on the call, and Colvin and Paige, it was all, um, with an effort to discuss the, um, the merits of the two ordinances, uh, on short-term rental units and, and who was, there was?
Yeah, um, Jennifer Blanchet, the zoning administrator was there, and Cameron, Sheriff of the planning and development committee.
Yep, and, uh, and also, um, and also, uh, our council president, Councilor Shag was there. So, um, basically, the goal was to just flesh this out. It seems like the, um, it seems like the momentum is now moving away from a layered duplicated process of approval that includes a license from the licensing commission as well as a special permit from we, uh, the ZBA. And I expressed to them our concern about absorption and docket limit. And, you know, I just shared with them the math that we had all discussed about absorption. If we surrender 20% of one application of our five docket meeting every single meeting, it would take 6.53 years to absorb 158 special permit, uh, sorry, 158 short-term rentals that are currently known, if they all had to come before us. And of course, we would only get halfway through that before we would have to reset the docket because according to the, um, the, the script of the ordinance now, um, they require a re-up every three years. So we were sort of mathematically doomed to go down by the head, you know, to sink one compartment at a time. I, I feel that, um, the, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, if you disagree, but it seemed pretty clear that the, um, remaining member of the council who co-sponsored this, Councilor McCauley, um, was, um, you know, was more than, um, more than amenable to conceding the double, you know, the duplicated two-pronged approach in favor of just the most efficient way to get it done. It seems like folks are leaning towards licensing only. And if there's some objection to, and the licensing would start with the predicate of zoning review, whether they complied with the, uh, with the zone, whether they complied with the prerequisites would be a determination made by our zoning codes, administrator, our zoning codes commissioner, uh, and enforcement officer, who's Jennifer Blanchet. She would make a finding, and then they would get to go, uh, in before the licensing commission for the license. If someone was aggrieved by that determination, presumably if they felt they, you know, they were unfairly great, you know, given a no by, uh, by Jennifer Blanchet, they could appeal that finding to us, and we would deal with those. In the absence of that, it would go and flow through, um, the planning office. And it would first be met with Jennifer Blanchet's review and then the licensing commission. I, I'm in favor of that. I know we all agreed that that was a better, more streamlined approach. It seems like that's the way they're going. I plan, and I invite anyone who wishes to, um, log in on February 2nd for the council hearing, um, to share any thoughts. But I'm happy to represent our collective thoughts. If, if those thoughts that I just sort of summarized, if those seem to be a fair representation of what we, what we all feel, I'm happy to just simply say that the, um, you know, that there's unanimity of our board, uh, in this sentiment that we feel it's more efficient, that, that it continue to go in this momentum, licensing commission only, no need to duplicate the process and have it come before us as well. Anybody have any thoughts or any, anything to add to that?
This is Andy, if I could.
Sure.
Just a very well summarized, Chair. Um, I would also add, just as, um, additional clarification, part of the basis of our discussion and, um, Counselor McCauley's understanding that the special permit may not be necessary, um, was discussion about the fact that, um, primarily this, came from some assumptions that a butter issues could be addressed by way of an initial permit. You know, in, in the sense that if an operation of short-term rental unit is underway and there are butter concerns, that it could be shut down and sort of preemptively. And it was determined in that conversation was a better understood that, um, enforcement issues are better addressed on the tail end by revoking a license or shutting down an operation that way, rather than actually a more complicated process of, um, trying to unwind a special permit, um, and deal with, or deal with preemptively a butter issues that were not known until the time of operation.
Yeah, I, that's correct. And so that, that's definitely a fair, you know, sort of clarification. Um, I think it's going in the right direction, you know, to just some, you know, my, my personal thoughts and, I'm, I'm happy that it's going in this direction. It, it felt for a short period of time that it was, you know, government run amok.
I can make one comment.
Sure.
Hello? Yeah, I mean, I thoroughly concur that we should not be involved, um, because we don't have the time. I, I wouldn't presume to know how to do it better, or, you know, how it's all done or whatnot. Other people are looking at that, but I thoroughly concur that, um, with your assertion that we should not be involved because we don't have the time. And, and I thoroughly concur with that, but I wouldn't want to try to tell them how to do it because I really have no knowledge. But I agree with you.
They, they just, yeah, I mean, that, I'm just sharing with you what their, what the consensus of the conversation was beyond my, I think my, the relevance of my involvement was, uh, to share our concerns about how, how I, I felt it would impact the, um, you know, the efficiency and economy of a public process to involve us as a duplicated layer, but also on behalf of us as, you know, volunteer members of a, of a city board. Um, and the reality of our docket and the workload that we currently bear as, um, you know, uh, you know, as volunteers is tedious and granular and requires a lot of focus. You know, like, it's hard to think of doing any more than we currently do.
I hundred percent agree. We should back you up in that. I mean, we said it last time. If you need us to say it again, we should say it again. But I a hundred percent agree with you, and I think we all do, that, that we don't have the time to, to take this on.
Yeah, I, that's, and, and with, with everyone's kind of ascent, that's how I plan to represent it. There's no need for everyone to come say the same thing. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, oh, you know, I wasn't, you know, getting out over my skis, as they say, right? To make some representation on behalf of, you know, all of us, without just making sure that I said what I thought I would represent and make sure that everyone kind of concurs with, uh, you know, the, the spirit of that. And, and I'll just share, you know, it's, it's everything that I'm about that I would say and everything I just said, I've said to them before. Um, and I know Andy has as well. So it's not going to come, there's any shock to anyone in this constituency group that this is how, you know, we feel as a board, uh, and the reasons why. But I'll just restate it because it's a public forum and we'll let the chips fall where they fall. But it looks like it's going the right way. You know, fingers crossed. Anything else on short-term rental units? So, um, I've asked Caitlin and Andy to put on our agenda for next meeting on February 8th, a discussion, uh, published on the agenda. So it's, you know, for, of formality, the undertaking of the formality of us, um, discussing and then hopefully voting on a, uh, a board bylaw that we would hold ourselves and applicants accountable to. And the planning office would help us police it, which would limit, um, any hearing to no more than five applications. And we'll just use that as a starting point to try to focus in our energy so that neither we nor members of the public are sitting around past 11 o'clock, you know, only to get bumped to the next flight or, you know, get bounced because we can't, you know, we can't get to it. And it's just not fair, to be honest. It's really just not fair on the focus, um, that's, that's, you know, incumbent upon us to do this work, you know, credibly. It's hard to do that at 11:30 after working, you know, a full day and having families and having lives. So I think that in the spirit of our longevity, um, it's the, it's a necessary, it's a necessary, um, safety net that I think we need to build in. So those are my thoughts on it. I've asked, um, I've asked Caitlin to put it on the agenda. We can discuss it out loud and then we'll see where it goes and vote on it and see if we can implement it and, you know, have it take action right away so everyone's on the same page.
Sounds good.
I got nothing else. Uh, Andy, did you have anything else?
Uh, not on short-term rental units, um, on the, uh, the one remaining item, I guess, on the agenda, the fee schedule update.
Oh, are we? Okay. Did you want to just let us?
That's okay.
I don't, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know anything about that, so I figured you'd speak on that.
Sorry, Caitlin, do you mind just widening that a little bit? I just want to make sure folks can read. Thank you. The, um, long story short is, uh, you know, it's pretty typical. Our fee schedules aren't updated very frequently. But we've determined, looking at, you know, Diane Bovare, who is our office coordinator, um, we look at our budget sort of periodically and just kind of, uh, get a determination as we look to the next budget cycle, um, you know, how much we're spending versus how much we're taking in, uh, for things like no-takers, um, any expenses, uh, legal services and so forth that might be, um, involved. And long story short, we're recommending an increase in the application fees to cover, um, some of that and also the, um, the advertisement fees, um, that, um, need some adjustments. So here, we're just asking, as we are with the planning board at their upcoming meeting, just for a slight adjustment in the fee schedules. This is ordered to essentially make sure that, um, applicants are paying, you know, reasonable, uh, portion of application fee and the taxpayers essentially are not expected to subsidize that on the other end, uh, which would be the alternative here, uh, in general.
Very good. Okay. Anything else?
I would just, if the board's inclined, I would just ask for a motion to approve the revised, uh, uh, fee schedule. And as, like I said, we'll be doing the same thing with the planning board, uh, for the same reasons.
Does the board wish to undertake any discussion on the proposed fee schedule? And if so, do we want to go round robin and talk about that? Looks like Mr. Moore wants to be heard, so why don't we start there?
Sure, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. When was the last time the fees were adjusted?
It may have been, uh, 10 years ago about. I think it was probably the first, second year, maybe I started working here, so it's quite a while.
Quite a while. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I, I have a question. He asked my first question, but, but I remember, um, we had an applicant, happened to be a neighbor of mine. So I was just, I had recused myself, but I was listening. And there, excuse me, it was just a homeowner. And she said, you know, I gotta pay like 700 bucks to be in front of you guys for this little thing. She was just a little thing. I mean, some of these big guys come in with these big projects and they take hours and we get continued four times. And we spend hours and hours and hours. And then you have a little neighbor who comes in, who spends 15 minutes and they're out of here. I, I guess my question is, do we distinguish at all in these fees between the people who really suck up all the time of our, of our planning department, uh, and our time, or, or does everybody charge the same amount? You know, whether you're a five-minute plan or five-hour plan, you pay the same amount?
It's, um, I, I, Ken, it's basically, it's, it's a, um, it's a, it's a flat fee, all-you-can-eat buffet, whether you go up once or go up 50 times. You know, they, uh, the fees are, the fees are the fees, and there's no ability, uh, you know, uh, to charge a sliding scale fee for, you know, bigger applications, um, that I can think of that's practical, because how, how in the world would we, you know, would it get policed? But my-
Well, like, for example, you could charge more for a variance than you do for a special permit, for example. I mean, I don't know. I just, I, I just, ever since, ever since my neighbor said that, I've never met this woman. I even never, I couldn't even pick her out of a lineup, but I just, uh, it's always kind of stuck at me.
Yeah, this is Andy. I, I would think it's a great question, uh, Ken, and, um, certainly there's some, some ability or some degree of, ability to have a, a scale based on the type of permit, if you will. Clearly, you know, as the chair mentioned, we, for categorically, you're going to have to keep the same fee for all those categories. But there may be the ability to make an adjustment, you know, in part to address the concern you raised. But generally speaking, we always try to make sure there's a nexus between, you know, as you pointed out, between the workload required by the board or the staff and so forth in proportion to the project. So for instance, um, you know, just pulling something out of a hat, uh, even though this board may not be the one that reviews something in Waterfront West, it might be reasonable to conclude that a large project or a large development scheme like that, uh, would have a much more substantial review fee or process involved, um, for everyone involved, rather than, say, the small, you know, homeowner who's making an adjustment, that does not take a substantial amount of time before the board. So certainly we can have some more discussion about, you know, granular, uh, you know, breakdown. But, um, generally speaking, like the chair said, there's, there's pretty much a, um, consistency across the Commonwealth generally with having one fee per permit type, if you will, um, generally.
Does that address any, does that address some of your question, Ken?
I, I guess, I just, you know, some of our applicants, they just take an awful lot of our time, and they should charge, charge more than the poor homeowner who spends five minutes in here.
I, I, I don't disagree in terms of balance and equity, you know, in, in an ideal, though fantasy world, we would charge application fees at the end of the application.
Yeah.
But I don't think to do that. But, uh, but boy, wouldn't it be balanced and fair? Uh, but that's it. I think in the interest of, you know, of, of equity and just, you know, transparency and, you know, in an interest of treating the public of which we are a member, right? As volunteer members, we're, you know, we're not elected officials. We, we should take very seriously any endeavor to like increase costs and fees because that often translates directly into access. This is a, I think, a modest escalation, though it's not a small amount of money. It's $50 per application. But, uh, I guess I, I'm persuaded a little bit by the fact that we haven't changed it in a, in, in quite a while. You know, so i- it's, it should be, it, it's absorbed over a, a longer period of time. It's not as though this, this is an annual escalation. But, um, we can go around and, and sort of get everyone's thoughts and then take a vote, see where, where it lands. Mr. Um, Ken, was that the, did you want to say anything else? Was that, um, was that the extent of your thoughts?
No, I'm just, I'm curious how other people do it. And if we haven't looked at it in 10 years, maybe some other cities, actually, we're, I think somebody told me, one of our counselors told me recently, we're the smallest city in the state. So, but, but maybe some other people have come up with other ways to, to do this. I don't know. It just, I just don't like, I think we should, I wish there was a way to not stick it to the person who comes in here for 10 minutes. That's all.
Well, I mean, we have the, look, we, this is, um, we have the, we have the discretion as a board to, um, adopt, reject, or request further review, um, you know, and ask Andy and the planning office's indulgence to maybe examine, is there another fee schedule structure that might be more, um, applicable to the concerns that you've raised, um, you know, the disparity of, of access an applicant? That would be, you know, just really taking one more meeting's worth of time to, uh, you know, to drill into this a little bit more deeply before we, you know, before we endeavor to vote to, you know, jack up fees equally across the board, um, by this amount. So we, we can do that. Uh, if that's your, it sounds like that's your, your, that's your sentiment on-
I'm just suggesting, pick five comparables, 20,000-person municipalities, and what do they charge? You know, just curious.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Andy, I, I'm going to just kind of, I'd love to just go around and hear what everyone's thoughts are, and then we can, we can take it, um, further from there. But, um, Stephen, what do you think?
I, I, I think that, you know, these are in the nature of a filing fee rather than, uh, something that is geared towards project size. I mean, if you wanted to get into sort of a, a per-square-footage sort of sliding scale, I, I think that would be really complicated, Ken. And you, you get into some weird things where you've got like, uh, a variance as opposed to a special permit for nonconformities to build an addition, but you wanted a variance to, uh, you, you know, it, it would just get, because you're, you're talking about, uh, apples and oranges to some degree here, especially when you factor in, you know, an appeal or what is the publication or, or, the publication fee, which probably, Andy, I would imagine goes right mostly to the, to the newspaper. Notwithstanding, you know, whatever bit the town takes for, uh, for, for their portion. But I, I do think these are in the nature of a filing fee, like if you were filing a complaint in a court or if you were going to renew your driver's license or something like that, these are just user fees. And there, it's not really geared towards, um, I, I don't think it's geared towards a sort of sliding scales for the size of the project.
But what, what, uh, what are your thoughts? Thank you, thank you, Steve.
I guess I, I agree a, a little bit with the fact that some, some of these fees are quite expensive. I mean, I, I remember filing for a, uh, a variance 25 years ago, and my filing fee was $25. And I think in 25 years, things haven't gone up tenfold, but I think, I think what it is, is municipalities are trying to, uh, justify their existence and, and make money versus spending money, where there used to be a social responsibility that, uh, our municipalities were there to support, uh, you know, homeowners. But the one that drives me nuts is the publication and a butter's fee. So, so if we looked at Merrimack Street, he's got a variance and a special permit and he's got the publications and a butter's fees. He's in for a grand just to come and stand in front of us. That, that's a big chunk of money. Now, I know that project can afford it. But as, as one of my colleagues just said, some of these poor people are spending $700 to come and ask for a bump out on their house. It just, some of it just seems a little out of line, but I understand it is, it is the way of the future. The one that sticks out the most to me is the publication and a butter's fees. That's going up 42%. I'm, I'm not sure in the next 10 years, there'll be any newspapers for us to publish in anyways. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that's going to be appropriate going forward. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, you know, I, as I kind of think about it a little bit more as I'm listening to everyone's comments, you know, I, I think that unlike, say, a building permit, which is tied to the value of the project and is scaled in application fee or user fee based on that, this is a pretty universal kind of set of fees. It really looks like everything's 250 with the exception of publication and a butter's list. And I don't necessarily know that a variance, you know, should be more or less because it's a variance. To maybe Ken's point, I've seen special permits that are onerous and granular. And I've seen variances that were, you know, a walk in the park, although we haven't seen those, you know, recently. They, they exist, you know? Variances sought in our now innovation and business park, you know, the artist formerly known as the industrial park. We would see those often. And by their very nature, it requires a, you know, a variance, but those tended to go very smoothly. So I, I don't think we should, you know, pick one and say variances are harder. They're, you know, they're harder to obtain from a board, therefore they should cost more necessarily. But we can table this if everyone feels more comfortable doing that and revisit it next meeting, give it some more thought. Give maybe Ken an opportunity or others to take a peek at what else is out there. I do think, you know, after 10 years, we should try to address it, you know? If we decide to bounce, you know, our, our kind of decision on this until the next hearing, give ourselves more time. I think we should try to endeavor to get a decision on it, yes or no by, by the eighth. Andy, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thanks. I just, again, just a clarification, you know, obviously from the office's perspective, we're just trying to cover the, the basic. And this is a very minimal cost, relative cost compared to, if you actually look at what it costs to run the planning department and the permit services and so forth that we have to, you know, we have to process. So as the, as the chair mentioned, the billing permits are actually in sliding scale proportion of the project. That department, if you take, you know, permits into account, actually takes in far more revenue than is necessary to run that department, you know, in terms of staffing. Whereas on the planning and zoning side, you know, for those types of permits, we don't, you know, offset that unfortunately in, in what we take in on fees. So it's not relatively speaking, not a significant, it's not as if it's sort of a justification for existence. It's actually to try to offset more of the cost of, of what is actually required for this process, for each application that's being brought before the board. The other thing I'd note, I guess, is just that the butter notices, that's actually not even something we're really directly able to control. We, we have to have a local paper that we're, give deference to what that fee is going to be based on, you know, size of the, the notice. And the statutes require those notices. So it's not as if, you know, I completely agree with that. Frankly, with today's technology, one might wonder why can't notice be given on a City of Your Time website or some other format? You know, with more access, maybe 24/7 and, you know, less cost to a municipality or applicant, you know, homeowner. But, but unfortunately that is, again, part of the process under the state statutes, never mind anything we have here locally. So just for context.
Andy, does this, I mean, are these fees, aren't they swept into the general fund, the general treasury and budget? Or do you guys get to keep these fees as part of the budget of the office?
Yeah, it's, it's, the, the city structure is not a completely, it's not organized completely through the general budget, of course. So there's separate line items or separate budgets for revolving accounts, if you will. So the revenues that are coming in for planning and zoning permits, for instance, are put in the revolving fund. There's an expectation that 50% of that be used to pay for note taker services for the various boards. And of course, that's a number of meetings throughout the year, you know, number of hours and so forth. And then there's some other things that have to be paid for out of that. So again, what we're getting at is that we're not taking in enough revenue to offset that. There actually was some conversations in the last year or two. There was a confusion, I think, between our department and the mayor's office about whether or not legal services, general legal services related to land use issues should be paid for out of that account. And that fund was actually depleted much further during that period of time as a consequence of that. And we, we sort of corrected that by, you know, clarifying that that really is, should be paid for out of the general legal services of the municipality as a, rather than assuming that the relatively low fees coming in would be able to offset, you know, legal services required, you know, in proportion to what was going on. So, but again, we're, we're trying to just make sure that that, those fees that are coming in are, you know, minimally enough to pay for minute taker services and other, you know, needs of the department that are not, you know, covered right now. So otherwise, we're going back to the city council saying, all right, can you increase the general budget to offset what it, you know, cost to pay for note takers, for instance? So you know, again, we're, it's, we don't see it as a very significant fee increase. We understand, of course, any fee is, is a cost. And we understand, of course, we could have a sliding scale, you know, discussion about where, where to make adjustments. But depending on how we categorize those, that may require more intricate work into which section of the ordinance are we referring to, which type of relief is being requested? Is there any way to put a scale to it based on square footage or something like that? And those may be more complicated discussions to the point that Mr. Delisle made earlier. There's, there's in some ways benefit or logic behind keeping a simple fee crusher, you know, at the outset, recognizing that, you know, you know, maybe we need to increase that number or, or as some members have pointed out tonight, we could look at having further subdivision of those fees and a spectrum of some type.
All right.
All I'm asking is just take one month, either the city can look up what, what, you know, five or eight other municipalities are charging or I'll be happy to do. I happened to, while you guys were talking, I looked up the town of Andover and they charge 100 bucks for a one-to-two family residential, 250 if you're multi-family residential. They charge 160 bucks for legal advertisements and 105 for recording it at the end of the day. So you can add those numbers up. I mean, to me, I just, I just, I keep thinking back to my neighbor who was complaining to us about this $750 fee for her little project. And I just would like to look at five other towns. And if you guys don't want to look it up, I'll be happy to, to, to look them up and send them around. And then I'll be happy to vote on this. I just would like to not do it in a vacuum. I'd like to see what other people are charging, how they're handling this. If there's any way to generate equity. So I'm just asking for one month.
Yeah, sure. We, we, we will devote some staff time between now and then. And certainly if you will, if you want to look on your end, we're willing to take a look at that information as well. But we will devote some staff time between now and then to do that. I would just suggest keeping in mind that just because a project is done by a homeowner, doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't a lengthy hearing associated with that based on the scope of work involved or the relief being requested and so forth. So, you know, the demolition control locally district is, is, is involved review that is there for a reason. That may take some, some longer process associated with, say, a special permit or a variance or something else going on. That doesn't, just because it's a single or two-family home, doesn't necessarily mean that that application won't take you as much time or will be as involved for staff, for instance.
All right. Why don't we put this on for the 28th of February and we'll revisit it then. Is that, that agreeable to everybody? And we'll see what we can find out in the meantime.
Thank you.
Okay. So Andy, that's what we'll, we'll just put this back onto our agenda for next time. We don't need to take a vote on that. This is a discussion.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. If, if there's, is there anything else? All right. I, I think that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn this evening?
I'll make a motion to adjourn for this evening. I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. All, you can just respond with aye or nay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any nays? How dare you? All right. No nays, so all ayes. Yeah. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned and have a great night, everyone. Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you, Gretchen, and thank you, Andy and and everyone else, members. Have a great night. Thanks for your, thanks for being here.